All right, welcome. Glad you're all here tonight.
Thank you.
I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak during citizens' comment period, there's a sign up sheet in the back of the room. Item two is a consideration of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we withdraw item 2C related to the General Regislator's Office relocation.
All right, we have a motion to withdraw. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there any other discussion? None or other discussion? We're pulling it off. We're gonna have to work on this down the road when we have more time, so it will die tonight hopefully with the vote here. So having said that, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of withdrawing it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. Thank you. Now is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented without item C?
Same move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. Thank you. Now is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented without item C?
Same move.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five oh. Do council members have anything they wish to present tonight? Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to remind everyone, the next Monday, the 5th, I'll have my discussion with anybody who wants to talk, chat, have discussion questions or whatnot. So eight to nine at Panera Bread in the morning and seven to eight at the library. So feel free to come by and talk.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anybody else?
The Saul Citizen Action Network hosted a table talk last Saturday. It's just a great place to just talk about social change and diversity, and we had a great conversation. Vice Mayor Short was there as well, and I think it went really well.
Yeah, it was. Great discussion.
And the table talk happens at 10:00 a.m., 2nd to 4th Saturday, at the Waynesboro Public Library.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item four is to receive a presentation of the 2018 City of Waynesboro draft comprehensive plan from Mr. Charles Bukey. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as noted, tonight you'll receive a presentation of the city's most recently drafted comprehensive plan from Mr. Bukey. I have a few introductory remarks, and I'd like to provide some recognition for some folks that worked on the plan. The comprehensive plan is a document designed to guide the future development of the city, and it's supposed to provide a firm foundation for policy in action to promote a more future or certain future in the community. In essence, the plan is supposed to prompt us to imagine what the city should be like, can be like, what we aspire for the city to be like in five, or 10, or 20 years, and help us understand whether we're on track to proceed towards that preferred future and give us some guidance as to how to either stay on track or change course as necessary. The Code of Virginia requires localities to adopt a comprehensive plan and to review the plan every five years to consider its revision. As well, we find that many agencies who provide us funding require that we adopt specific measures in comprehensive plans in order to receive that funding. In 2017, the city council provided funding to revise the comprehensive plan, and in January of 2017, we selected CZB of Alexandria to help us do that. Shortly thereafter, we assembled a steering committee that was comprised of a good cross segment of citizens in the community, and began to do both analysis of the community and as well, hold a series of various types of public meetings. I'd like to recognize the steering committee. It's a fairly lengthy list. Elzina Anderson and Terry Short represented the city council. Stephen Arie and Shannon Boyle represented the planning commission. Diana Williams represented the school board. As citizens, Doug Davis, Miguel Yousse, Melinda Ferguson, Bob Harris, Sam Hostetter, Kathy Johnson, Mary Kane, Andrew Kelly, Danny Ledford, Noel Owen, Stacy Strawn, Dave Wolf, and Sue Wright represented the city. We also assembled a technical advisory committee of professional staff members to oversee the project. Those members included Luke Jude, the Director of Planning; Dwayne Jones, Director of Parks and Recreation; City Engineer Todd Wood; Public Works Director Brian McReynolds; Chief of Police Michael Wilhelm; the Building Official Joe Hanberia; the Zoning Official Laura Martin; Greg Hitchen; Economic Development Director, and myself. Over the course of the year, the plan was developed, a draft was provided to the planning commission in the fall, and in its most recent meeting just a week ago, the planning commission recommended to, or adopted a recommendation to the council to adopt the plan. Tonight, you'll receive information, but we will schedule a public hearing in the near future to receive the recommendation of the planning commission and to hear public comment for the council. I think over the last, the course of the last year, we had a lot of meaningful, honest conversations, sometimes tough conversations. Sometimes we examined things that were uncomfortable to us. Our consultants pushed us, and we pushed back, and at the end of the day, I think we came up with a plan that provides a great deal of insight as to a potential future for our community. Comprehensive plans are a guide, they're not regulation, but having said that, I would ask that you review the primary thoughts and guidance of this plan, and if they don't ring true to you, if you look at them and say that those are not things that you can support, then I think you need to tell us that, because otherwise, as we move forward, I think that the staff is gonna rely on this plan, and many people in the community who have a vested interest will rely on the plan. And if you feel like those are things that you can't abide, then I think we should know that, and we should revise the plan to your liking. The plan calls for action and investments in schools, and public safety, and neighborhoods, and parks, and I think there are going to be tough choices to be made. We won't complete the accomplishment of a plan like this overnight, but in the long run, the test of the plan and the value of the plan is only in its execution. And so, again, I would implore upon you to consider the plan as you adopt it, as your plan, and a plan for the citizens that you represent. It has been said that by far the greatest and most admirable form of wisdom is that needed to plan and beautify cities and human communities. Actually, Socrates, the Greek philosopher, said that about 300 B.C., and he was a pretty smart fellow. And so, I feel like this is a weighty task for us, but I feel as well that as a group and as a community, we're certainly up to the task. And with that, I would ask that Mr. Bukey provide his presentation.
Thanks, Jim. Mayor, council. Thank you for asking me to join you today. I wanna just give a few brief remarks before going through the slides. The slides are just a dozen and a half. We'll go through them pretty quickly and open it up for questions if you have any. I think some congratulations are in order, just to be here tonight. It's a year-long process. It takes a while. It takes a pound of everybody's flesh, and what you've got is a draft document that is, in my opinion, quite, it's a fairly remarkable document. Some context, I think, is useful to validate, you know, its remarkable qualities. The planning profession, of which I'm a member, the planning profession's formative years was in the early 1960s. It's important context. The profession grew up with an assumption, baked in assumption, that growth would be something that every community could assume: growth in population, expansion of the economy. And when you have those assumptions built into planning processes, the work of planning, even the art of planning, it's difficult, but it's not particularly stressful, because you can assume population growth and economic expansion, and revenue sufficient to tackle the challenges a community is gonna have. Okay? That's a luxury that many communities in the United States don't have today. And so, when we partnered with the city of Waynesboro about a year ago, one of the realities we confronted right away were demographic and economic contextual circumstances that so many communities, so many states, so many regions are wrestling with: population that's no longer growing at the rate it used to grow at, economies that are changing faster than sometimes we can plan for. And in that context, what we've endeavored to do, and with the support of you, the planning commission, steering committee, city staff, have developed something along the lines of, perhaps you might think of it as a flexible decision-making guide, so that when circumstances change, it allows you as a community to flex to those circumstances. That's a fairly remarkable achievement. And so while there are, there are communities in the South, the Sun Belt, and the Far West that continue to expand and aren't quite in the position that Waynesboro, that many cities in Virginia, the Carolinas are wrestling with, old textile communities, for instance, they will eventually. And so you are, as a community, wrestling with circumstances that other communities will eventually have to come to terms with. I wanna thank you, Mayor, and thank the city manager, Mike Hamm, for really helping me, helping my staff and my team better understand this community, understand the fiscal situation, the history, the culture of the community as the year has unfolded, and I appreciate that. And before I go into the slides, I wanna say that after 28 years in the planning profession, it is worth pausing to single out your staff. Cities 15, 20, 25 times the size of this city don't tend to have the committed, the level of commitment and the level of expertise that you have here at city staff, from public works to parks to city manager to planning director. It's the chief, Dr. Castle, across the board. This is just an incredible community, supported by a very talented city staff. I just wanna make a note of that. See if I can get these to work, okay? So what I'll try to do is just give a high-level fly-through of the plan. Many of you have seen pieces of it. So this is a draft. It's for your consideration, right? As Jim Shaw had pointed out, it's a non-binding document. It is what you choose to make of it and what the community chooses to make of it. It's a flexible decision-making tool. We've intentionally crafted this document so that it is not prescriptive. It allows you to work within a framework, and as circumstances change, it allows you to amend it with, we think, ease. So you don't have to wait 10 years to make substantive changes. If you feel it needs a change, you jump right in and do so. The document organization that we felt allowed you flexibility has some key pieces. One, a foundation. That foundation is comprised of three elements: the baseline conditions, which is where you are now; your core values, which is what you told us in listening sessions last summer is the essential character of this community; and planning principles, good planning principles that will help you make decisions, right? So that's the foundation. The next part of the plan is what we call the big things, which is to say, you may have eight, 10, 12, and indeed, perhaps even more challenges on the horizon, but there are some parts, some aspects of life in Waynesboro that demand more attention than others. Those are the big things. It's imperative that you get those right, so we'll talk about that a bit. And then, goals and projects, which is the goals and objectives you have and the projects that we recommend and you consider investing in to help you get those big things right. So that's the layout, and let's go through it a little bit. We think you're at a crossroads. We think that your demographic situation, the nature of the economy here in the valley, the pace of change in Virginia puts you at a critical crossroads. We think you have a lot of assets to work with, and this is an outstanding time for you to seize that, initiate a fairly robust level of investment and recommitment to your own future, and this plan recognizes that crossroads and goes in that direction of a fairly robust set of self-reinvestment. It's predicated on three pieces, in our view: the imperative of catching up, the obvious to keep up, and the importance of getting ahead. One finding that we came across early in the project was that, for a variety of very understandable reasons, changes in the economy, some businesses coming and going, the capacity to keep up with levels of maintenance in public and private property has been challenged over the years. It's important that we not fall further behind in some key respects, so catching up is critical. That has to also occur alongside of keeping up, right? So not only do we want to bring, for instance, roads and bridges to a level that puts us ahead of a cost curve, we also wanna maintain all of the rest of the city at a high level of finish. So we wanna make sure that we're keeping up. But it's the third piece that I would ask you to draw your attention to a bit now and in the coming weeks, which is, your neighbors are not sitting still. They are doubling down. They are investing in infrastructure, in their school systems, in public safety. They are moving their housing markets, stabilizing weaker parts of their cities, and they are positioning themselves to compete. You want to be sure that they're not outcompeting you. So on all your decision-making in the coming years, we want to encourage you to keep in mind these three charges: to constantly be catching up, right, until you are caught up. Once caught up, don't fall further behind, and to the best extent possible, get ahead and begin to outcompete your neighbors. So walking you through the plan, the baselines, the values, and the principles, that really is the foundation of this document, and in those baselines, we would draw your attention to, and the plan draws attention to some demographic challenges, competitiveness challenges that flow from that, your condition and image, education and economics, I'll come to those in a second, your core values, the values that your community expressed to us and to the steering committee over the course of the summer, the inherent prudence, the family-friendly community you are, your entrepreneurial spirit, the extent to which you are an independent community, and the extensive pride of being here in the valley where you are. Those all frame who you are as a community. And then the planning principles: really good stewardship, balance, and resourcefulness. So those were what we heard last summer, and they factored into how to set a foundation for going forward in planning. So if we come back and we take a look at those baselines, I would draw your attention just to something that may provide context and framing. If you look a decade ago, you will see where manufacturing is a fairly robust part of your employment base. It still is, but it has declined, and in an important respect, it has traded places with retail. That's important in a couple of respects, but noticeably, it's important because retail is very finicky, right? And so, we don't know, no one has a crystal ball, nobody knows how durable the retail sector is today, and so as your source of revenue and source of reliance on retail goes up, so too does your risk, okay? So that's something we just wanna bring to your attention. So it provides significant revenue, but its durability is something that's very difficult to predict, right? The other piece that I wanna draw your attention to on the bottom here is, over the last 30 years, there's really no getting around the fact that your private property has aged. Many of your homes have grown tired and want a fresher coat of paint and a newer roof. And as a consequence, your tax base is challenged a bit, the principal is a little smaller than it needs to be, the deferred maintenance is high. In fact, it's high enough that we would calculate roughly $75, $76 million is about what it would cost to bring your residential market up to what we would call par, okay? That's a significant chunk of change. Every community in America has a deficit like that in some respect, right? What's notable is, we also think that your community is sitting on $30, $35 million a year, the residential community, it can afford to reinvest in its homes that is choosing not to. So after we subtract for payments to the bank, for utilities, for taxes, right, in a truly healthy market, that additional $30, $35, $40 million a year would typically be going into housing repairs, into upgrades, into second baths, into additions, right? So your housing market is deprived of a fair amount of discretionary investment from residents, right? That's important. That keeps the tax base lower than it needs to be, and it also sends powerful signals to the surrounding market. So in that respect, those are baselines on the far left that help us begin to think about, well, what do we do about that as planners? Where does that lead us? Well, it leads us to identifying what we believe are the big things, right? The big things to pay attention to. So one is vulnerabilities, the second is standards, and the third is pride. And by vulnerabilities, we mean what puts you at risk. By standards, it's what undermines progress, and pride is essentially the signal. What are we communicating to our neighbors, right? To visitors and to our neighbors. And so if we drill down a little bit, what I wanna draw your attention to is three vulnerabilities. You have a revenue vulnerability, and that is what we talked about a moment or two earlier, which is a growing reliance on retail, right, as a funding source. So that's a vulnerability. You have a, you're inching up in your poverty level. It becomes a vulnerability there as well, right? Flooding risk, simply by virtue of where you are, it's a risk, okay? So we wanna just identify it and understand it. Standards become an important second of the three big things that we believe your plan needs to address, and that's principally in property, which we talked about a little bit earlier, right? And education, right? So not enough of your kids are moving through grade to grade, ready for the next grade, and not enough of them are coming into high school, ready to thrive in high school, and then when they get into high school, it's really hard to catch up, okay? So your standards, both on your care of your property and the stewardship of children, has fallen behind a little bit. And pride. So pride is important, both in the built environment, which, you know, we've covered now twice, but also the natural environment, right? You have a setting that not a single one of our clients over 28 years wouldn't, you know, give their eye teeth for, right? So stewarding that setting, leveraging that setting is critical, right? So when we think about the big things, and we think about these baselines and your core values and putting them all together, now you begin to have a framework for where to go forward as a community plan-wise. And where this plan focuses attention are in these five areas: education, infrastructure, neighborhoods, quality of life, and your economy. And in that sense, the plan then breaks down into a set of activities that are tied together with goals in each of these categories. So for instance, in quality of life, the plan speaks to the issue of parks and trails, particularly trails, given the high return on investment, dollar for dollar, that you're apt to get through quality investments in trails as well as parks. On the neighborhoods front, your housing values are 20% lower than they could be, right? So how do we get those values stabilized and grow those property values? Safety in your community, projecting that safety across the community, across the region, so that you can compete for households that might choose to live someplace else; neighborhood quality of life, and the condition of your rental property, which needs some attention. So those begin to be activity areas where we can set goals and focus attention. On education, we've got both classroom work to do and facility work to do, all right? So everybody understands that there's considerable deferred maintenance at the high school, but we've got some classroom readiness issues to tackle as well. On the economic front, we've done a, you've done a fabulous job of adjusting your economy the last 15 years to, in the, sort of, in the shadow of economic dislocation and large corporate decisions made that have left you with some vacancies. You've done outstanding work on the retail side along 64. Additional work is gonna, we believe, need to be done to enhance the value of those intersections. Museum development needs to be accelerated. Some flooding analysis needs to occur. We think your downtown is not yet optimized, and additional analysis will help you get closer to that. You've got a world-class asset in the Croze Tunnel. You wanna connect to that. There are important revenue shifts that the plan asks you to consider. For instance, right now, you've got a substantial reliance on meals tax, sales tax, and a different kind of reliance on residential property tax. So thinking carefully about how to optimize those are discussed in the plan. Your infrastructure, you actually do a wonderful job of maintaining roads and bridges. We wanna keep up the excellent level of stewardship there. But we want to, in this plan, encourage not just the functional achievements of infrastructure stewardship, but the aesthetic opportunities that upgrading your infrastructure presents. And so, the plan speaks to that, and then moves into the issue of tree canopy and expanding your tree canopy and adopting and implementing a sidewalk plan that's been on the shelf for a bit, and it's now time to put that into place. So when we walk through those broad strokes, we sort of... stewardship, but the aesthetic opportunities that upgrading your infrastructure presents. And so the plan speaks to that, and then moves into the issue of tree canopy and expanding your tree canopy and adopting and implementing a sidewalk plan that's been on the shelf for a bit, and it's now time to put that into place. So when we walk through those broad strokes, and we sort of say, how do we do that? Well, from an education point of view, our view is, you're going to have to compete for the best teachers in the region. And in order to compete for the best teachers in the region, a best-in-valley teacher compensation program, or some equivalence of that, will be necessary. You're not likely to retain, much less recruit, the very best teachers unless the compensation package is at a place capable of doing that. Repairs to the high school require attention, investments in school readiness require attention, and we would encourage, over the next several years, that council, the community, school board begin to reexamine boundary catchment areas for the different schools. In terms of activities on the economic front, the industrial park is an important marker for future growth for the city, so we want to recommend that the pump station get installed, that you stay current and have the industrial park ready, so that should an opportunity present itself, you can jump on that. The Natural History Museum probably needs a forward commitment to accelerate it and move it on the pipeline, that's something we would encourage you to consider. Connection to the Crozet Tunnel is not something to put off for too long, it's part of your ultimate investment in quality of life, the parks and trails package that we think you'll need to compete in the region. Your downtown businesses, right now, the vacancy rates aren't, are too high, the capacity for the community to provide financing assistance for business expansion and development downtown is a fraction of what it needs to be, that's a place where we would strongly encourage you to consider investments. We talked through the analysis of downtown flooding risk. On quality of life, you've got parks that are ready to go in the pipeline, so completing the Constitution Park is something that is at the top of the list, but we want to encourage council to invest at the highest level you can see fit to do it. So to move well beyond a functional investment, and to begin putting investments into your park and trail system that puts you on par with your surrounding Blue Ridge Parkway level of aesthetic finish. You want the same level of finish to Sunset Park, you want to continue that to Basic and to Ridgeview, so that you really are setting a standard across the board. The theme that you want to see between the lines in all of this, that we would really have to bring to your attention, is for a long time, we don't think that you have invested in yourselves at the level necessary to compete and thrive in a very competitive region in the next 15 and 20 years. So you're going to need to invest more robustly in education, more robustly in the aesthetics of your community, so that the finish on your community communicates to this region that you care enough to do so. At present, one of your great risks is that you are not competing well enough for the middle class, who has so many choices, so many excellent choices in this region, that they are too frequently choosing to invest elsewhere, to buy and plant roots elsewhere. In order to compete more successfully there, you're going to have to raise your game. And so the common theme in all of this is classrooms, classroom readiness, facilities, parks, trails, roads, infrastructure, public safety, everything's going to have to come up a notch, right? So when it comes to implementation, let me come back for a second. All of these items carry fairly heavy price tags. Our council to you is, be very careful about not, about choosing to not invest in these recommendations. Our analysis is that you are at a precarious place in your economic history. Your competition, whether it's Stanton or Lynchburg or Harrisburg, everybody's raising their game, you're going to have to as well, all right? So this is not the time to try to go too light, all right? And so as you begin to make choices about where to put your investments, be mindful that every, every, there is a penny wise, pound foolish rule that will be in place as you go forward, okay? So every, every opportunity that you miss to invest, you can rest assured your competition will be taking the opposite approach, okay? So on implementation, we would encourage you to pass a tandem consistency policy. So two weeks from now, three weeks from now, when you are considering the comprehensive plan, we would suggest that you write a tandem consistency policy, or require that any decision that you make in the future, all right, have a rider attached to it, which basically says, is what is being proposed consistent with the comprehensive plan? And if it's not, you either need to amend the plan or not pass what you're considering, right? So this is because the comprehensive plan is a voluntary document, it will be very easy to not implement, it's a way to hold yourselves accountable. So it's a fairly strong recommendation we make on that front, okay? So let me reiterate that. Planning Commission has recommended your adoption. If you choose to adopt it and then choose to not fund it, you are effectively not implementing it. By passing a tandem consistency policy, you are holding yourselves accountable to implement what it is you adopt, okay? So there is a secret sauce to this. You have to invest in the excellent staff you have, you are also short-staffed in almost every department, so your, so staff is going to have to both grow in size and stay at a high level of quality. You have to make it your business to outcompete your neighbors, because right now, they are ahead of you, all right? What you measure is what you get. So the metrics that are contained in the report, we would encourage you to pay close attention to those metrics, right? Make sure that your decisions are consistent with the plan, we would encourage you to amend the plan regularly, right? If a year down the line, two years down the line, it's not serving you in a key respect, we would encourage you with existing staff to amend it, right? And we would exist, we would also encourage you to empanel your steering committee as an advisory body, to stay with you throughout, until there's a complete overhaul of this plan if adopted, so that you've got a relationship with those who put time into thinking through, what would constitute goals, what would constitute activities, what were the planning principles, what did we hear the community voice last summer, how did this plan, you know, move from a concept to a document, all right? I'll take any questions.
Have you got any questions?
I would like to know, your staff and yourself, if we were to, let's say, get up to so-called par with some of our neighbors, that we need to do, what kind of tax increase would that entail?
I'd have to get back to you, if you're asking about what, how much of a millage we would have to adjust on, I'd have to get back with you on that.
Because I agree with a lot you're saying, and I appreciate your efforts. And I'm pleased in here to listen to some of the things that we're already in that mode, moving ahead, Sunset Park and the high school, and some of the things you mentioned, industrial park. And I was just curious, anyone in this room can go to any city in the country and point out things that need to be changed, and I just want to know, what do you, what is your group decided would be a good way for us to start with some of the implementation we have here?
We, we're excited about where you are on Sunset Park, right? We're excited about where you are in Constitution Park and pre-existing plans for further developing your trail network, right? We absolutely would strongly encourage you to follow through on all of those fronts at the highest level you can possibly conceive. We would strongly encourage you to extend out to Crozet, right? So on that front, you are right away beginning to communicate to residents here that quality of life is going to go up. You're also communicating to the surrounding region that you're in it for the long haul, this place matters, quality of life matters, right? And it puts you in a position to compete, that's a big piece of it. You have, in parallel fashion, you've got slipping standards on too many blocks and too many, too many properties, and you're going to have to raise, you're going to have to set a firm floor, right? You're going to have to, your code enforcement is going to require attention, okay? You've looked the other way for too long, while too many landlords treated their property and their tenants too shabbily, right? So you're going to have to put a nail in that coffin, right? That's going to have to happen in parallel fashion. Downtown, you've done miraculous things with a small amount of money, it's time to put a little bit more money there so that you can actually get a center of gravity downtown. I think that those are three things, absolutely. Now, a pickle you're in is, the high school requires attention, and it requires so much attention that you might not be able to do anything else if you just did the high school. So it's critical that it get on your list, but probably not tomorrow. Probably a better idea, from our point of view, to aggressively save, to tackle it robustly in three, four, five or six years, in parallel fashion to the, you know, parallel to the other work. I think when the surrounding, when the valley gets a sense that you're setting a firm floor and standards for real estate, you're beginning to invest in quality of life, and they begin to get a sense that there is a plan for addressing some of the educational challenges you've got, that's a strong signal, and it's a signal people will pay attention to. I would absolutely do that. I mean, you're short in other areas, the chief needs a few more officers, there's, you know, there's, it's a, there are a number of areas where work is required, you're going to have to make some tough choices. But you're at a position now where, actually, you've got good revenue coming in on the retail side, so much, it's not the trick, but much of that is making a decision on how to use it. So yeah, I would, this, to summarize, continue doing some of what you're doing, but raise your game as you're doing it. Does that respond?
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Charles, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
I would just, I would just offer that, I really have appreciated the process, and I think it's certainly a conversation that our community has needed, and I think it's been delivered in a way that, I tell folks all the time, that I think it's honest, but inspired at the same time, so, and I hope that we can move forward in that direction, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Item five is to consider adopting a resolution for Sunset Park recreational access road funding. Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, very timely request here. As you're well aware of the project we've been pursuing at Sunset Park, one of the strategies for funding is to request recreational access funding from the Virginia Department of Transportation to build the road from North Delphine up to the overlook. The program that VDOT has will provide up to $250,000 of unmatched funds, and then an additional $100,000 of funds with a dollar-for-dollar match. So in other words, that you, we could ask for as much as $450,000, and we would be contributing $100,000 of that. Right now, the road estimate is at $355,000, so if we request that, then our obligation under the program would be a bit more than $50,000. So with that, we've provided the necessary resolution to make a request of the Commonwealth Transportation Board, and we would encourage its adoption, and we'll send it down to Richmond.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Is there any questions, Mr. Shaw? Not as our motion to adopt the resolution. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five. Item five B is to consider adopting a resolution ratifying the city council values and vision statement. Mr. Hamm.
Mayor Allen, members of council, I'm going to call a 32nd timeout here and ask Mr. Jude Day, do we have the slides for this on the, thank you. So this also, like the preceding item, is fitting for council's consideration. You'll no doubt recall that we spent some time together in December as a group, as a team, the council and members of the executive staff, to consider some practical issues, some team-building exercises, and develop and consider a statement of vision and values for the city council. Statements like this are important and oftentimes powerful expressions in that they signal to the staff, to your city manager, to the community, to potential investors and stakeholders, who it is that the council believes that we are as an organization, that we are as a community, and where we're headed and how we might contemplate pursuing them. To a certain extent, it's similar in objective to a comprehensive plan, but far for, far for, far more at a higher level and a higher plane of conversation and expression, but equally important. So as a vision statement, I'll give you a second to take a look at that. I think it reflects something that Mr. Bukey acknowledged, that perhaps I am, perhaps members of the staff, perhaps the entire community to some extent, have become a little guilty of taking for granted our proximity and the value that we enjoy, the blessing, the good fortune that we have in our geographic location in the Shenandoah Valley, and some of the park assets and other natural assets that we have. For years, we have mentioned this theme in passing, but in my honest assessment, we've never quite mastered the ability to capture that advantage and build on it in our messaging and in our action as a staff. And so perhaps it's not surprising that we come back to the theme of our vision being so closely tied to our enjoyment of favorable natural beauty and position in the Commonwealth. I think what you should try to do as a community and as an organization is capture an expression that distinguishes you, again, extending the theme of competition, distinguishes you from other localities in the area, folks that, with whom you will compete for residents and businesses and events and investment. And I think this vision expression developed by the council does that. Value statement number one speaks to quality of life. It's not unusual that elected bodies and staffs consider their position and what they have to do to ensure a favorable future for itself and residents, mention quite conspicuously the quality of life. And I think this statement, again, you can see the theme of competitiveness, that lifestyle, a community lifestyle that is the envy among localities in the region. You'll recall that in our work together, we've kind of worked with the word choice there, and it does express the notion of competing among other localities and trying to establish a standard that will be preferred to other localities. Community prosperity, whatever our aspirations are, our maintenance needs, our quality improvement needs... needs, we won't accomplish much if we're not healthy from an economic standpoint, the community is not prosperous, if our community organizations and businesses aren't thriving, if our families aren't thriving, if individuals aren't thriving. And so this is perhaps a required nod to what many, many, if not all, cities and counties are thinking about, is how do you create an environment where your businesses will want to invest, where they'll want to stay, where they'll want to grow, and create prosperity both at a corporate level and at a household level? And so council, I think, necessarily acknowledges that, and that expression should not be taken for granted. You'll see also some themes that begin to emerge of quality and cost associated with that quality. You'll recall that we did this work as work on the draft comprehensive plan was wrapping up, and so you'll see, again, themes, common themes emerging, community pride. I think we're looking at a basketball gym, and I can recall as a team running wind sprints at the end of a practice, and if one person starts to slow up, the whole group starts to slow up, and you get sort of this group, a decline in group performance, a decline in group accepted standard, and by the same token, if somebody wants to pull the group forward by demonstrating a little extra effort, that individual can lead in that regard, and oftentimes they'll elevate the performance or the standard for the entire team or group. And I think that may be the case here. I think Mr. Bukey has identified, we have adequate financial capacity in the community. Perhaps we've been, become a little complacent in some areas with our, with the personal standard of maintenance and investment and general pride. I'm a native of Waynesboro, I've been here my entire professional career. I don't think our, our community suffers from any affliction in the regard of pride. I think we're a prideful, we're a proud people, but I think perhaps in certain areas, we've just become a little under-motivated in demonstrating that pride. And so that theme emerged in our work. Level of service, I think that, again, quality, we've been pressed or will be pressed in the coming weeks to consider the quality of the work that we do, the service that we deliver, the quality of our stewardship of natural resources in the community. But we know too that in Waynesboro, stewardship from a financial standpoint is important. And so I think, I think this should speak, to me as a manager, it should speak to the municipal staff, and it should speak also to the community, that we want to set an appropriate measure of quality for service and program delivery, but we also want to measure that and provide an excellent value against the taxes and fees that are assessed to deliver that service. And I think the important, you have an important merging there of fiscal stewardship and quality. And so what that says is, I think we'll be pushed as an organization and challenged as a community to make sure that our amenities, our facilities, our features are of sufficient quality to compete, but I don't think that we'll ever be known as on the forefront of cutting-edge technology, emerging technology, flashiness, extravagance, ease. We'll have to work hard and deliver good value and good quality in an appropriate measure of resource, reminding us that whatever resource we have available as a municipal organization, it comes from residents and businesses who pay various fees and taxes. So I think that's a key, key statement about our identity as a group, and probably emerges not just from a unique social or political or economic perspective from this room or this council, but also from a variety of factors of independent self-reliance, work ethic, stewardship that has been characteristic of the entire Shenandoah Valley for many Problem solving, and this is a companion to the previous one, I don't think we should expect that money in and of itself will solve our problems or move us forward in the manner that we wish in and of itself, that we will have to rely on staff who have been appropriately identified as talented and knowledgeable and motivated this evening, but it will take financial resource and creative entrepreneurial effort on the part of your municipal staff to solve problems. And I might point out too, that not all the problems or challenges that the community faces presently should land in the lap of the municipal government, that there are responsibilities that nonprofits in the community can address, churches, businesses, civic clubs, really to enjoy the success that Mr. Bukey expressed tonight and that the plan articulates, it really needs to be a comprehensive and community effort. But certainly, the municipal government has chief responsibility in certain core areas. And that is the vision statement and the value statement, or those are the vision statement and value statements that emerged from our retreat in December. We've furnished a resolution by which the council can formally adopt that work. If you're not prepared to do that tonight, you can certainly direct staff to bring this item back for formal consideration at a subsequent meeting.
Any questions or statements you'd like to make right now?
I do have a question. Mr. Bukey, halfway had us on the back for our sales tax. Should we be concerned? I'd rather have this answered by our own staff. I was asked a question even as recently as today, that should our citizens be alarmed by the fact that they saw on the news that our sales were down compared to tomorrow neighbors? Are we, are we interested in that?
So I would say from a staff standpoint, and I think we probably watch that as closely as anybody in the community, it's not news about which to be alarmed, I think it's news of which to be aware. And I think as we've, we're continuing a work on developing a recommended budget for FY19, and I think we've come to the conclusion that perhaps we've reached our plateau, at least in the current frame of time, about sales tax. And there are certainly, I don't think there was any expectation that it would continue to increase indefinitely, but I think you can read, if you follow general news or financial news, that retail investment is changing across the country, and that's probably having some impact. And as Mr. Bukey pointed out, it's very susceptible to even mild fluctuations in an economy. It's just simply not as stable as property and taxes of that nature. So a more short answer is, it's too soon, I think, to be alarmed, but you should be aware and be cognizant of that fact as you think about this budget and future budgets.
Okay. And is restaurant fees included in that?
It's, it's, well, it can be, depending on how you talk about the term "sales tax." In this case, I think the analysis and comment applies exclusively to sales tax, not the meals tax.
Thank you.
I would just add, I think, I think staff's done an excellent job of capturing the tone and conversation that we had at, at the retreat, and I'm reminded of one of the, the comments that came up through the, through the consultants, through the conference of planning process of, of values. And so if we all think about the values of our city, strong education, strong tourism, looking out for each other, strong neighborhoods, that we care, the question that I got, that I got, that was pivoted back to the group was, how do we show it? It's one thing to talk about your values, but what are the ways that we show it? And I think, I found that inspired, and I think that this is an absolutely fantastic way to, to continue that conversation in our community about choices, you know? A community of 22,000 can only do so much. And so we've, we've got to have practical choices as we move forward. I think I would offer, just my own personal take on, on tax rate versus value ages, it's less to do about the tax rate, and it's more about to do with value, right? So if we're making, if, if revenue is coming in and we're making investments, that creates value for all of us and all of our properties and businesses, that's a probably pretty good return on investment. So it's, again, less to do about the tax rate, more about value, and adding value to all, all, everything that we do, from our civic groups to, to businesses that we frequent and restaurants that we dine in. There's lots of good restaurants in downtown Waynesboro, too, if you guys are hungry afterwards. That's all I have. Thank you.
One of the articles in the Virginia Municipal League magazine that just arrived, talks about municipalities across the nation, but across Virginia too, still focusing on where we're at from 2008 and the recession. And so how would staff compare us to other localities as to, have we completed, completely gotten out of the recession? Are we 75%? How do we fare? That probably goes into everything else we're talking about.
I think that's a, I mean, that's a good question, and as statistics go, what I would say is that we certainly have not returned to the development, pre-recession development boom, and that's probably to be expected, that, you know, the kind of growth that we were seeing in the early to mid 2000s was really pretty extraordinary and exceptional for, you know, our community and for the region as a whole. So when you look at things like the number of building permits issued, the type of developments, commercial developments that we see, we've seen certainly that we're ticking back up, there are, you know, houses going up in most of the major subdivisions, and we've continued to see, you know, a lot of properties be refurbished in the commercial areas, so, you know, I think we're seeing some forward progress from where we were in, say, 2010. Sales tax, meals tax revenues, you know, were climbing at a pretty healthy clip post 2010. Now, the article that Mr. Freeman refers to was picked up, and we, we had started to see even last year in fiscal year 17, that the, the sales tax had, at least for the time being, hit something of a ceiling. Meals tax actually has continued to climb, lodging receipts have continued to climb, and those, those types of receipts are much healthier than they were coming out of 2010, 2011. So I think there, you know, I'm not an economist, and it's, it's hard for me to say, oh yeah, we've, you know, we're, we're in a healthy recovery, but the, the types of indicators that we look at as local administrators would say, well, we're making progress, but certainly we don't see the robust expansion we saw prior to the recession, and we probably, I don't think anybody predicts we will anytime soon. I think we see property values as getting just incrementally better. I mean, that, you know, you see a percent, 2%, we'll go through a reassessment year coming up, and we'll see where we are, but, you know, in the last couple of reassessments, what you see in housing and commercial sales wouldn't lead us to believe that there's been, you know, a really rapid expansion in values there. So it's maybe a lot of what people say about the national economy is, yes, we're recovering, we're no longer in recession because there is an expanding economy, but to be blunt, it's not something we're getting, we're giddy about, you know, we, we just, we're cautiously optimistic. I don't see that our revenues, I don't want to give away too much about the upcoming budget, but the revenues of the city aren't naturally growing at a very rapid pace.
And in the past, though, haven't we been very conservative on how we set what we thought we would receive in sales tax and retail tax?
I think we always have been, yes, in the years that I've, you know, worked with the budget group here over a couple of different finance directors, I think we've set a pretty conservative, you know, standard for projecting revenue.
And I would just offer too, that I think the other sort of element here that, that's concerning is, at a, at a national level, I mean, we all had brown boxes arrive at Christmas time at our doorsteps, I mean, let's just be honest, right? And so there are consequences to that. Do you purchase something off of Amazon? There's a probably pretty good chance that you're not, we're not collecting that sales tax revenue. So, you know, there's a, the Supreme Court is actually taking up the, the matter of local tax and state tax, actually this spring, I think, spring, early summer, and would hope that, but it really is, this is, this is a byproduct of the convenience of shopping online. It's not like people are, are, you know, disposable income is going up, not down. So they're buying it, just, we're all buying it, but buying it from folks that, unfortunately, it actually undermines ourselves, so.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the visions and value statements?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five-o. Item six is to consider approving an application from the Wayne Theater to close a portion of Main Street for the sale and consumption of alcohol beverage in the city, on city property on Saturday, April the 7th, 2018, from 6:00 PM until 12:00 AM during the Wayne Theater's grand gala. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, the Wayne Theater organization is holding this as a fundraising event, and they've approached the city or requested from the city, as you've indicated, the ability to close Main Street between Wayne Avenue and Church Street from 6:00 PM until midnight, and then also sale and consumption on public property. I think that will largely simply facilitate the ability of attendees to move from, what I understand will be sort of a party or buffet tent on private property on the south side of Main Street, across Main Street into the theater for various portions of evening events. Be my recommendation that the council approve this request.
Any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five-o. Item six B is to consider approving an application from the Shenandoah Valley Art Center to allow the closure of certain streets and the sale of consumption of alcohol beverages on city property on Saturday, October the 13th, from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM, and Sunday, October the 14th, 2018, from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM during the Fall Foliage Art Show. Mr. Hamp.
Unless there are questions, this is the annual Fall Foliage Art Show request.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five-o. Item seven A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $13,803 of state and federal asset forfeiture funds for transfer to the equipment fund for the purchase of a used vehicle for Detective Division for the Police Department. Mr. Hamp.
So Mayor Allen, you love it when I do this. I'm going to change the, the plan a little bit. I'm going to talk about seven A and seven B together, and then the council can consider introduction of those separate ordinances, but the two are related. So what we're endeavoring to accomplish here is the appropriation first of $13,803 of state and federal asset forfeiture funds. These are resources, financial resources that come to the Police Department by virtue of drug interdiction work. That ordinance will be paired with an appropriation ordinance that appropriates $6,000 from the Police Department operating budget to the fleet fund, and the two amounts combined will fund the purchase of a used vehicle for the detectives division or the investigations division in the department. That will replace a vehicle that will be transferred to the K-9 officer, replacing ultimately a 2008 Crown Victoria with 130,000 miles on it.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. So in reference to seven A and the $13,803, are there any other questions, Mr. Hamp?
The budgeted amount out of FY18, where we had had a portionment of, of funds set aside into a reserve for equipment purchases in the equipment fund, does this $13,803... aside into a reserve for equipment purchases in the equipment fund, does this $13,803 provide unanticipated revenue?
Yes. So this is newly appropriated revenue to the current operating budget.
So conceivably, that $13,803 could then be assigned into a, unassigned?
No. Not, I would say not the $13,803 because that's asset forfeiture, that's got to be used for...
No, I don't mean, I don't mean that, but I mean out of the, in terms of if we're adding another $13,803 into the equipment fund that we had already budgeted in the, and, and there, we could move the 13 that we had previously allocated into and have this replace those funds. I'm not saying...
Well, we've spent that money. The, the original appropriation in the 18 budget is either has been spent or is in the process of being spent. So this contemplates the purchase of a car that we did not anticipate buying as of July 1st.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. That was the missing ingredient.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
A hard way to get there.
It was a hard way to get around my elbow, yeah.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance for the $13,803?
So moved.
Thank you. This ordinance and others presented tonight will be considered at the March 12th meeting. Item 7B is the $6,000 he was talking about taking out of the equipment fund. So is there any questions of Mr. Hamp of that? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 7C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $7,500 from the Economic Development Committee Reserve account to the general fund for website redesign costs for the economic development website. Mr. Hamp.
Mayor Allen and members of council, having a well-designed internet web presence is a very effective, if not the most effective, economic development marketing technique to reach companies of all sizes and site location consultants. Our present website was established in 2012, the URL of WaynesboroBusiness.com, and that is, provides, that's our main economic development information website. Since the launch, the site has continually been updated with content, but the basic graphic design and site map and overall look has remained the same. In order to maintain market presence and update the look for functionality of the site, a redesign is necessary. And, you know, we're, so this would be, we're about six months into the existing website look, so to speak. At the same time, the staff has been notified that our current vendor is changing the platform for all of its managed sites and will be changing the common and easy-to-work, changing to the common and easy-to-work with WordPress platform. To facilitate the change, the vendor has offered a very reasonable cost redesign and to migrate our current site into the platform. Staff has evaluated the options of this offer compared to a completely new design with a new, with other vendors to determine that this is the most cost and time efficient option. There's a one-time fee of $7,500 to accomplish the change. A beneficial financial note is that our current annual hosting fee, which is $3,600, will be reduced to $1,400. So in summary, this change is necessitated by our current vendor, probably coincides with a need to refresh the look of our site in any case, and will be reducing annual maintenance and hosting expenses associated with the site. The appropriation ordinance contemplates taking the $7,500 from the Economic Development Reserve.
Thank you, Mr. Hamp. When we first set our website up in 2012, does anybody know what the cost was for that?
About $30,000, 35 maybe.
And do we know what the cost would be if we decided to go with a new one and not update this one, but just, you said there, this was a lot more cheaper, but do we know what that cost was?
I, I don't think we got to the point of bidding it. I think there was a survey of the market of generally what, what do you cost, what do you charge to redesign, and it was exceeded $7,500. Mr. Hitchens is present tonight and might have more complete or specific answers to your question.
Come up to the podium, please, so people at home could hear you, Mr. Hitchens.
Come forward, please, Mr. Hitchens.
Yes, sir. The quick answer is it would be the same as our first website in a neighborhood of $30,000.
Okay. Thank you, sir. But any other questions?
Is this a local vendor out of Kirahesi?
I'm not sure. Local vendor? It's not a local vendor.
It's a vendor that does community and economic development websites. It's their specialty. They're not, they are not local.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you. Mr. Short. Item 7D is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $13,000 from the Economic Development Committee Reserve account to the general fund for redesign costs related to the Tourism Visit Guide. Mr. Hamp.
This is a visual aid. This is the Tourism Visitors Guide. The last printing of this was 2012 also, and since that time, we've distributed 80,000 editions, or 80,000 guides in two separate editions. The second edition was updated and printed in 2014, and we're approaching the end of that inventory. Since both the consumer marketing techniques in Waynesboro have undergone some significant changes in the time, staff is currently redesigning in the guide and format and to meet consumer changes by increasing content, adding visuals, and organizing the content by topic. This, also, we recommend by funding through the Economic Development Reserve in the amount of $13,000. We anticipate that the design would be completed and ready to print by March 15th in order to have the supply by the spring tourist season. If you have specific questions, I think Mr. Hitchens can respond to those.
Any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Item made is to consider making an appointment to the Disability and Aging Board for Independence. Mr. Hamp.
Mr. Gary Ladone has submitted his name and candidacy for consideration for appointment to the Disability and Aging Board for Independence.
Thank you. Are there any questions about a motion for Mr. Ladone? Or is there a motion to appoint Mr. Ladone?
Make that motion.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Any, is there a second to it?
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five o. Item nine is Communications, Correspondence, and Calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you. And citizens' comment period time?
No one has signed up to speak.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.